Honorable gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Texas, one hundred and fifty.
One invisible.
Thank you.
You really, fully on your seat. What? You're rich, man.
I don't have anything on the public comment. I need to approve the minutes of the January twenty first meeting. You have a copy of those in front of you. I'll entertain a motion when you're ready.
I'm moved we approved the minutes of January twenty first.
Motion from Richard to approve the January twenty first minute.
I'll second.
Second from Jane. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Financial report. See, the tax, sales tax is outstanding again. The trend lines, I think, are just amazing. The numbers are up. Up seventy percent. Sixty seven thousand dollars over the previous year at the same time period. So that's good.
Gee whiz this.
Any other questions? Did they hit the, did everybody get a packet? Yeah, they got a packet.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody who looked at your packet, got any questions about that?
If you do, just call right now.
Okay. No questions for those of you. What's the matter? Board of City Commissioners, the Board of City Commissioners, may discuss to take action on the following agenda item. Item number one, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, stop the train. I have in front of me a letter from the University of North Texas. Texas Municipal Clerk Certification Program. Ms. Roma Holly has been through this certification. It takes over two hundred hours of individual home study, passing four different courses, so on and so forth. And she's now a Texas Registered Municipal Clerk. I'm sure your pay will reflect that. Thank you for doing that and making you better at what you do. Appreciate that. Now, item number one. Discussing consideration of request by Billy Bob Brown for hotel motel tax event funds for sponsorship of the second annual Carbon Classic Weekend. It's a roping event. And I have a copy of that in front of you. And what he is asking for is a total of sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. And he gave a nice little breakdown of how that will work. And I'm assuming we have the funds to do that if the force is hard or in full or whatever.
Yes, we have the, the funds to fully support his request from our hotel motel funds if the commission wishes to do so.
It's a good deal. And they, they bring a lot of people to town. If you, if y'all read through this, there's potential for a lot of folks to be here.
Yeah, a lot of kids get help to rope and that too.
And I believe this is his second year?
Yes, he said second annual. Did he say second annual?
Are we the only ones that, um, are, can I, can come?
Out of the hotel motel funds for this, yes.
We generally get all the money here. Uh, but anyway, I'd recommend we give them all of it if that's what the city manager prefers.
Yes.
And the motion to give them sixteen three twenty, if that's what you want to do.
I'll make a motion that we give the Billy Bob Brown the sixteen three twenty, is that what it was?
Yeah, sixteen three twenty.
Yes. For the profit.
Motion from Jane and the second from Shirley to give the Billy Bob Brown the money for the Carbon Classic Weekend roping at sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Item number two, discuss consideration of the state of the art affair, the state of affairs of the Lyric Arts Center. Only Gary Ford is here and he has another piece of paper. I guess, Gary.
Yeah. This, um.
Honey.
You're not gonna do it?
I didn't hear this.
He needed to do something to it, but you told me anyway. Yeah, there's.
Man, I could barely read this thing. I was going.
Well, I couldn't read it.
It was a little small. Thank you, sir.
No problem. So we might not be up and running. I had a couple of things I was gonna show on the screen, but this was one of them, so we can do it without. And, um, it's not a big deal if the other one doesn't happen, I can do it next time. Uh, I had submitted the end of the year quarterly report for December and the end of the year totals previously to this. I assume you have that in you, it looks like it's microscopic.
It is.
In the package.
Yeah, I got it.
And if anybody had any questions, I wouldn't get to go over that. Uh, I just, uh, if anybody had any questions, I could, uh, clarify anything you wanted to clarify.
It looks good. It's profitable, that's good.
But most of that, and that's what I was gonna go on with, but there's no way I can do it without, uh, the visual. But, uh, was, uh, how the support from the city helps and where that money goes. So, uh, but I could do that next time, so it's not a big deal. Or she gets it up and running later on.
It's on the side and running.
Yeah, I can do it, do it later. But if nobody has any questions, I'll just talk briefly about this, uh, credit card transaction. Uh, I, I went ahead through the, the last report where I gave this information. Uh, the year wasn't over, it's in October. And so that was three columns under left. And so the one, I'm on your right, the one column on your left represents, uh, the totals for twenty twenty four. And so they were up a little bit from October. And I just thought that was, was interesting that we're still serving forty eight different communities and, uh, about four hundred different credit card transactions over the course of the year, which is pretty cool.
That is. That's good.
Well, I think this, pardon me, Shirley, I think this is a great report and someone asked about hotel motel and justify that. Boy, you've done that, because so many people are coming from pretty good distances.
Absolutely.
That's a neat deal.
Yeah.
Thank you for tracking that.
What's that? Where, where everybody, yeah, that's, that's, that's the city, that's the building address of all the credit card transactions, or the building city of all credit card transactions. It's stupid easy to run this report. And then the count is like a top, and you look at the count on the far left, average eight. That means there were eight transactions from credit cards out of Abbot. Yeah, it could have all been the same credit card, or it might have been eight different credit cards out of it, you know? I could, I could get that level of detail, but it's too complicated.
Yeah, that's too much.
So my, my only care is that they came and spent money.
Yeah. I get the dragons, I really liked that.
Uh, other than that, you know, we had a great year last year. Um, of course, we sold out in the spring, it was still Magnolia, so it was a great way to set the year. And we didn't quite live up to that again, but it was still, uh, within our norm for the year before with what we ended up, everything was good. Auditions are going on as we speak tonight, so we need six?
Eight.
Eight, we need eight men in this show coming out.
What is it?
It is Agatha Christie, and then there were none, and then there were none. It's a murder mystery.
Yes, it is.
It's not a comedy.
Yeah, it's a, it's a downer.
Yeah.
It is that.
Do you have a voice sheet?
Uh, you know, we might.
Voice sheet?
You got a nice, yes.
I remember from the flight though.
Oh, I'm sorry. Look, y'all woke up, Joe.
The last, the last time we needed more than three men, we couldn't get them. And, uh, and we had to, even though we'd already, the way this works, it's really interesting. You have to send money into these theatrical, uh, royalty places, and there's more than one. And so you have to find out what you want to use, find out who needs the money, and you have to send it to them before they'll even talk to you. You have to send them in advance and pay for it. And then they'll tell you, oh, you can't do that one because it's gonna be an orbiting this year, or it's gonna be, so they give you a protective area. That hasn't been a problem yet, but we didn't get, uh, uh, five, we were looking for five men maybe, and we only got three, and so we couldn't do that show. So that was last fall, no, that was fall twenty twenty three is when that was, I believe. And so they don't give you all the money back.
Really?
No, no, they don't give it all back, it's a racket, it's like lobsters. And, uh, and then we had to do it again, you know? And so that's thousands of dollars. I mean, it's, it's could be thirty five hundred dollars, could be more, if you do a musical, it could be ten thousand dollars, but it's, uh.
When do you have to have, like, what's your deadline to decide whether you can do the show or not?
Well, it's, we have to look at when we want the show to perform and then how long it's gonna take to rehearse.
Yes.
And then, you know, and so we're looking at sending this money in, in January for an April show. And so we have to set our, start setting our calendars real early, you know? Because we have to have a date, uh, for the royalty to do it. Anyway, it's just a, it's a crazy business and it's a lot of money. And so it's, if you had a flop, say you had freezing rain for four days and you couldn't even do the show, I mean, you know, we'll lose four or five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Nobody comes through the door. It's risky. Makes us nervous.
Y'all doing a good job. Appreciate it.
Woo hoo, okay. So that leads right, nice segue to go into this. In the financials that you guys have, there is a cash on hand report for the end of the year. And the number on that report, is there a pointer by chance?
There's a pointer.
Except for on the bottom of it. Yeah, well, it's on the top.
A real pointer.
I was asking, yeah.
I love it. That's the number. But basically is our bank account at the end of the year that we had in it. And you kind of go, my gosh, that's a lot of money, thirty two thousand three hundred and twenty eight dollars and ninety four cents. Last year, this time, it was eight thousand. The difference, of course, is the money from the city. So what I've done, okay, we'll give back credit just a little bit here. The way we set up the funding in the lyric is we have what we call programs. It's all the lyric, but we have, the lyric is really the building. ACE is Art Center Events, like the Battle Bands or the Rip Fest or whatever. BCT is the Bankhead Community Theater. The OAM is the Abbot Art Museum. And CCL is the Community Christmas Lighting Courthouse and Christmas Street. So then we have some funds that we've set up, like the riser fund, we're trying to raise money, uh, to buy seating risers. But the, but if someone donates to the Bankhead Community Theater, we have to be able to track that money. And so that's why we have a fund. And so all the expenses and all the income and all the donations for any of these funds goes in, and by the end of the year, this is what the numbers were. This is how much money the lyric has in its operating fund at the end of this, end of last year. This is how much money the art center had in their operating fund at the end of last year. This is how much money Bankhead had in the end of last year. If we take this thirty two thousand, can, can you scroll the screen up so I can see what's on the bottom? And if I subtract what we received from the city, eighteen thousand hotel motel tax, we end up with fourteen. And then if I subtract the money that's coming in from donations for the risers, which is seventy six hundred, that leaves us with the six thousand, six hundred and seventy three dollars, which is what we had last year. We had about eight thousand. So that's just a way of kind of backing back out, see if we didn't get money from the city, how much would we have in the bank? We, this is about what we have in the bank. Okay, when it costs us three thousand dollars to buy royalties, it's pretty scary to only have six thousand dollars in the bank. And then if we had a flop, we basically couldn't pay our electric bill. So here's why the money from the city has been really important. We're, we have built, we're trying to build in a cushion, so if something happens with the building, we have some money on hand, like a roof repair or windows get broke out or the marquee breaks. This is money that we have on hand that we can use to fund improvements to the building or repair to the building. The, uh, art center, the, uh, art center events, five thousand roughly, that they have to start covering the cost of another event. Okay? So if you look at Bankhead, they didn't really make any money, they didn't really make any profit last year. They covered their expenses and a little bit of profit, but that last, that last show we had in the fall was, I mean, there was like maybe two hundred dollars profit. The rest of it went into cost, it went into costumes and so, and that's fine. We don't have a problem breaking even, it's just scary if you don't break even.
Yes.
So they have twelve thousand dollars in their fund, which, which gives them a cushion if we had a flop. Then they might have six left in there. That's enough to do another show. That's why this money from the city is important, it has let us, it has let us build up some money for each of our different programs where we can not be terribly nervous about having a disaster. So I don't know if that's clear, I probably didn't do a good job explaining that, but, uh, it's, uh, pretty amazing to be in the shape. And we'd really like these numbers to be a little bit bigger, uh, but, because we'd like to do this, particularly our building improvements, we'd like to start investing more in the building. But, but that's, you know, baby steps. So if anybody has any questions about that, all I'm trying to do is kind of give you a, a basic idea of how we're managing our money. And it was stupid hard to get QuickBooks to do funding accounting like this. Like, I cannot even share how difficult that was. It is not built to do that.
You pull it out, whatever you have.
Yeah. But it can do that.
Yeah.
So it's, uh, so we can run a report at any point in time and basically, I can tell one of the programs whether they have enough money to buy, what they need to buy. So right now, for example, this, this, this isn't twelve thousand dollars now, because they've been spending money for the next show, can't even worry, didn't worry. Anyway, any questions, I'll be glad to answer, otherwise I'll shut up and sit down.
Clear as mud.
Um, appreciate, we, we greatly appreciate the money we get from the city.
Y'all are doing a great job, y'all doing, all the things are going down there, that's good. Candy, you're doing a good job.
Yeah.
Keep it working. Anybody have any questions for Joe, for Gary or Anna? All right, thank y'all. Item number three. Does Scott's gonna consider actually remove a member from the Eastern Youth Advisory Board? They've got a member that's never showed up, so their bylaw says if they miss three meetings, they're done. Uh, this guy, Juan O'Hara, missed three meetings, he hadn't come to a meeting. We need to take him off that board and the next deal is to put someone in his place. And entertain a motion to remove Juan O'Hara from the Youth Advisory Board.
I'll make a motion to, um, remove Juan O'Hara from the youth, uh, what is it? Youth Sports Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion from Shirley and a second from Richard to remove Juan O'Hara from the Youth Sports Advisory Board. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. And the next item is to add someone to the Youth Advisory Board, and they have Barrett Thompson slated for that position.
I'm making a motion to approve the appointment of Barrett Thompson to the Eastern Youth Sports Advisory Board, but he's a great asset to this community, who knows the kid.
Second.
And a motion from Jane and a second from Richard to appoint, uh, Barrett Thompson to the Eastern Youth Sports Advisory Board. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, discuss consideration to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty nine, twenty five, nine eleven. At the orders of the City of Easton, Texas, the meaning of revising Chapter fourteen streets, sidewalks and public places, Article six, Eastern Cemetery by adding provisions regarding the Pecan Grove Earned Garden, uh, providing a repealing clause, providing a servability clause, and establishing an effective date. You have a corrected copy of that in front of you, it should be on your desk. And that's just taking the word city, uh, be, page two.
Yeah.
Is there anything different from what we've had in the past?
And it also includes, um, the wording that the cemetery fees shall be established on the city commission and to see the city's rate and fee schedule on page three. Under section fourteen dash one through zero.
Yeah.
We added that as well.
Okay. Section fourteen, one thirty cemetery fees, cemetery fees shall be established by the city commission, see the city's rate and fee schedule, section fourteen hundred dash one, that's on page three.
Let me ask a question, how large is the, the earned garden?
We have ten, ten places right now, ten, and two over by.
Is there room to enlarge it if needed?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, I've got ten more slated to go on the east side, and then we've got lots of room further down.
Okay.
Good. There's something that hasn't been mentioned so far, we've seen, I don't know what.
Three by three, it's on page three, section fourteen dash one two four.
There's a picture.
It's on my report.
It was on my report, we sent a picture, yeah. Okay, entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty five dash nine eleven revising the Eastern Cemetery provisions regarding the Pecan Grove Earned Garden and adding the phrase concerning cost of space to the eastern rate and fee schedule.
And a motion from Jane to approve ordinance twenty five nine eleven, and second by Richard.
I'll second it. I'm the number two.
To approve ordinance twenty five nine eleven on second reading, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Item number six. Discussion and consideration and recommendation of approving the planning and zoning case number twenty five dash zero zero one to obtain a specific use permit in order to use property for an apartment in a commercial one or C one district, uh, with a variance to allow the entire structure to have an apartment use due to the building size and configuration. And if y'all remember, this is a discussion we had last month, and this is, uh, the property over on, what, Lamar Street?
Two oh eight South Lamar.
Two oh eight South Lamar, and that is owned by Joe Williamson. And, uh, this property is a very strange, whether the one, one unit, it's not two floors, it's one big unit.
Yes.
And there was some discussion, I remember last time, about the water meter for the front part is in that building as well or something. Uh, you own the front building as well, as I understand it, okay? That's what this is, and this is property trying to get this on the tax rolls and, and Joe can do something with it?
And this would allow it to be, um, utilized for apartment use, that's the request, planning and zoning met, and they approved this, um, variance for this structure and, uh, except before the city commission out for.
And there were no objections to this, and we sent out notices to people to sign in that area around that, or two hundred feet around it, and there were no objections to it, and.
Correct.
Put this to use.
You have a question? The, uh, address is on Lamar, does that mean it's back behind, the building behind?
The Dow Sand Building, uh, and it, it borders the alley between, uh, the, the library.
Okay, yeah.
Faces west.
On the apartment?
You recognize that blue building?
It, it was, it was actually, um, manu, uh, it, it's been constructed at some point for an apartment. And, and I don't know that, uh, in, in, as long as I've been aware of the building, it's never been used for commercial. It's, it's built out for apartment with a kitchen on the first floor, a shower bath, full bath on the second floor, top, top, top living. Um, it's just not, doesn't have the practicality for a commercial office.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Need to.
I'll make a motion to approve the planning and zoning case twenty five dash zero zero one to obtain a specific use permit in order to use property for an apartment in a C one district.
Second.
Motion from Shirley and a second from Jane, from Richard, to approve the planning and zoning case number twenty five dash zero zero one. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries.
Spend your money, Joe.
Item number seven, discuss consideration to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty five dash nine one three updating the cargo container uses. And we can't answer all the questions, Tony, and you can table this and bring it back. If you have any questions we can't answer here, uh, this is a, we talked about this last time, people didn't ever use cargo containers, we've had requests made. Uh, basically, this is about doing temporary, uh, uses of cargo containers in certain areas. And again, this has to, when someone wants to use it, they have to get approval from the neighbors around. Uh, it can't be, and as most of our auditors address things, being in someone's driveway, being in the way, can't be in a lot of sight, can't do other things that's typical for our, uh, but it, we've just had some requests about using cargo containers for uses and people. So we're trying to put an order together where people can do that and be able to, uh, city, you've got the list of the cargo containers in all the areas that's approved with a special use permit across there, and, uh, you have those, what it requires.
Enlisted Go before the P and Z Board, um, and they approved this. Are there any questions?
And they're gonna have to have a special use?
They do have to get a permit.
A permit. And then can they get it for, it says long term, so they can use it, depends on their request, if they want it long term?
Yes, long term would be for more than ninety days, short term is ninety days or less, um, and, and here it spells. Um, and, and here it spells out where and how it can be placed, it has to be skinned and painted and it can't just be.
Eight oh thing. Block the view of what?
Yes, correct. Page three, um, underneath item eleven C. Shall be placed in a location that minimizes the visual impact from surrounding streets and properties, any cargo container not hidden by eight foot, solid fencing must be painted or scanned. In a manner that covers any existing signage and blends into its surrounding area.
Okay, good.
Can't be bigger than ten by ten by twenty.
Residential area.
Will this affect the ones that are already enclosed?
No, those are grandfathered. And this only allows for one cargo container, um, in a residential zoning area. That's the size of the ten by ten by twenty. So residential can have one, um, commercial areas are allowed to have six, but that's on a temporary basis, it's not a permanent situation.
As long as I have to go before the planning and zoning board first, to make sure that everything's covered in there.
Yeah. I move that we pass ordinance twenty-five dash nine one three.
I'll take, I'll take up that motion.
Motion by Richard and a second from Charlie to approve ordinance twenty-five dash nine one three on the first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose same sign, motion carried. Item number eight, discussion consideration to approve the first reading ordinance twenty-five dash nine one four, creating a limited business zoning district.
This also went through, uh, P and Z, this is to, so the reason this comes about is, uh, the new appraisal off, appraisal district office. And this creates a limited business district, um, and it will also go for, uh, there's two lots on either side of the appraisal district. Building that this would go for and it's for limited use, so Monday through Friday, eight to five. They can't disturb, um, you know, the residential area and the setting in that environment. So it's not like you can have a machine shop working out there, it's Monday through Friday doctor office or something of that sort. Are there any questions on this?
And again, this has to be a person who wants to get it.
Correct. Allows for an opportunity if we have any new developed area or something that if they wanted to request for an area to be its own limited business district, they would have to go through P and Z.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash nine one four, creating a limited business zoning district.
Second.
A motion from Shirley and a second from James to approve ordinance twenty-five dash nine one four on the first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose same sign, motion carried. Item number nine, discussion and consideration to approve the first reading ordinance twenty-five dash nine one five. An ordinance of the City of Eastland, Texas, of repeating and replacing ordinance twenty-five, twenty-four nine one two. Adopting an amended and comprehensive rate and fee schedule and establishing rates and fees to be charged for the city services. Providing a repealing clause, providing a servability clause, and establishing an effective date.
Okay, so on page six of this, um, exhibit A, we had talked about the cemetery rates being added in here, they were not added in when we passed this last month. So they are added in now, right above it, section thirteen hundred dash two, commercial hand carts, two and three, those prices were not increased when we received our bill. Um, from Waste Management and so we reflected those accurate prices, they did not go up on those two. As they did everything else, so that's reflected. And then on page nine. Section eighteen hundred dash eight, curb stop replacement fees, these prices, we, uh, reflected the accurate prices. Um, after our weekend and holidays on the two inch curb stop, that re, that reflected zero dollars before. Um, and so we've upped that to reflect accurate prices. The prices before were one hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, three fifty and zero. So we weren't really even charging for anything after hours. On a two inch curb stop.
Where is this, where do we put curb stop? What do we do then?
For the water.
That's right by the meter.
Huh?
By the meters.
About by the meter.
Obviously they have done them and he wanted this updated, correct?
Yes, because the curb stop costs us and what we were charging before didn't reflect any kind of.
Comparison?
Yeah, to what they were having or costing us now. Because like if, if somebody calls us and says they want their water turned off. And then they call back and say, I've still got a trickle of water coming in, well.
The backside of the meter.
Is, something's wrong with the curb stop, that's where they, our guys turn off the meter. And they wear out or whatever, and so they have to be replaced. The, somebody will call and say, my meter's full of water, well, it's because the curb stop is leaking, so we have to replace those often. But, um, we don't always, we haven't always charged properly.
Okay.
Those are the only changes that were left on this. And everything else is the same that was approved at the last meeting.
I move we pass, uh, for the first reading ordinance twenty-five dash nine one five.
I'll second.
A motion from Richard and a second from James to approve the first reading ordinance twenty-five dash nine one five. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose same sign, motion carried. Item number ten, discussion consideration for resolution twenty-two five dash zero three. Continuing participation with the steering committee of the city served by the Atmos. A resolution authorizing membership in the Atmos City Steering Committee. And authorizing the payment of five cents per capita to the Atmos City Steering Committee. To fund regulatory and related activities relating to the Atmos Energy Corporation.
All the information is in your packet regarding this, um, and this is an annual thing that is done yearly, so we have representation.
Right.
And the price is the same, isn't it?
Yes, five cents per capita.
I move we pass resolution two, twenty-two four dash oh four.
Good statement. A motion from Richard and a second from Shirley to approve ordinance.
Twenty-two four oh four.
He said twenty-two four, it's twenty-two thousand.
I know, this says twenty-two four in here.
Oh.
Approve ordinance twenty-two five dash zero three, which is what it says at the top of the order.
Okay, I'll, I'll change my motion draft.
It's a typo on there.
Yeah.
Approve ordinance, uh, tw- this is, it's resolution twenty-two five dash zero three, uh, to continue our. Relationship with the Atmos Steering Committee and James Doyle is abstaining from the vote. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. You oppose same sign, I voted for that. Alright, item number eleven, discussion consideration to approve the master service agreement between the City of Eastland and Kennedy Computer Services, our Solutions Incorporated.
In your packet, you have the master service agreement, um, currently our IT company is Kennedy Computer Solutions, they're, uh, moved, they're. Requesting to move to a, a monthly billing instead of an hour, by the hour billing. And this is for city hall only, this, that's in your packet. And we are getting new computers and we are doing away with our servers and we are going to the cloud, that was approved by commission a few meetings ago. Um, and this is to increase our cybersecurity, so stack program, Chance is here to answer questions regarding that. Um, I, this packet is big, so do y'all have specific questions that Chance or I can answer regarding the master service agreement?
Well.
Or maybe Chance can explain it a little bit more than my raw overview?
Uh, appreciate, appreciate the explanation. So, you know, the way that we've kind of done our services in the past was, um, just by the hour, kind of as needed, it's called break fix. And if, if you have something that breaks, you know, we come, we come and we fix it. Um, we kind of want to go move towards managed services, managed services or monthly billing. It, it kind of gives predictive, uh, monthly billing. Our cybersecurity services go kind of way up to cover a lot of the gap in coverage for the cybersecurity. Um, so, um. I don't, sorry, I don't really know what other questions you might have that I can answer, but, um.
Well, I have a lot of questions, the first one's on the very first page of the field where it says client handbook and IT policy manual.
Yes, sir.
We have the IT policy manual, but we have not, we're, we're not agreeing to that yet until we can go through and make sure that that fits us and Chance did express that that was. Or Mike did express that that was okay, that we could go through and if there were issues in it, that we could fix that before.
Yeah, absolutely.
Discuss what works with those in the IT policy.
What if we get that and we don't like it? Are we stuck with something we didn't read?
No, we're reading it right now, I'm about halfway.
Well, let me read what this says, this is what makes me nervous.
I have narked, the question.
This says, "By signing this agreement, you agree to read and abide by the processes, procedures and policies outlined in our client handbook. And/or the IT policy manual copied which will be emailed to you after your signing this agreement." Hello, party.
We already have it.
We do already have it?
We have it.
Have we read it?
I, I'm about halfway through reading it.
I'm sorry, we, you know, I just used our legal team to, to generate, um, templates for us and it really is just spelling out. The services that we're providing in the cybersecurity stack, which is, you know, instead of it just being like endpoint detection and response. And emails, you know, actually the city doesn't actually have email security, but backups and IT support. We're bringing in like a whole suite of cybersecurity services, so, um. There's Microsoft Cloud licensing, there's the multi-factor authentication, there's, um, password manager. Uh, there's everything that the city's kind of missing right now, so email security, backups for all the, the data for the Microsoft Cloud. We have, you know, instead of their computers all being bound to the servers. All their data's gonna live, uh, in the Microsoft Cloud, so that'll be OneDrive, SharePoint, Teams, it kind of modernizes, um, the IT infrastructure. Uh, and then, um, let's see, let me see what else is in here.
What is your turnaround, if we make a phone call to you, what is your turnaround time?
Uh, same day, next day. So if it's urgent, we take care of it, uh, like if, if the business is down. We drop what we're doing and we take care of, you know, to get you back up. If like, if one person is down or a VIP in the business is down, we consider that like a, a down call, so we just, we, um, take care of it, so. If it's something that, that can wait till the next day, then we'll, you know, take care of it the next day, so.
Who decides it can wait till the next day?
Uh, y'all do. So.
We, city hall has not had issues getting our stuff fixed.
Well, I know we have.
When we call them.
Well, but the difference in the world we're in today, if they don't come out, they don't get paid. Now they don't come out, they still get paid. So it's a difference in attitude about, I, I want to make sure we have even better service, because now we're paying you to be on call, if you will.
Yes, sir.
Three sixty-five, you know, type of deal. And, and I, we've been down this road before with people that's done computers and we've had to pull teeth to get anything done. And I just want to make sure we all understand and agree and, and somebody, our client handbook and our IT policy manual, we've read that manual and we're comfortable.
We are going through it and they said that we were allowed to go through.
Our attorney has already read it.
Yes, so legally it is, it is able to be, it's not anything issue legal wise, but if we have issues. Meeting, some of the stuff they say we have to meet, they were open with changing.
Yeah, I, all of this is real flexible for me, this is just, um, templates that I've built up from our legal team, they said, here, shoot some contract templates, because we weren't. Really doing contracts before and, you know, we've been working with business mentors and they're saying, hey, let's, you know, you need to have. Contract in place that protects us and protects y'all and it's, it's very flexible as far as, this is just a twelve month term. Um, it's just to cover mostly because some of the licensing that we have in the cybersecurity stack are twelve month licensing, but, um. Like, service is not going to be an issue.
They can solve many of our problems.
I can solve anything.
Getting on our computer.
I can solve any, any problem.
They don't even have to come out.
Yeah.
They can dial into our computer and fix a lot of issues that we have.
Not, like ninety-five percent of IT support or, or more is all done remote, most, most every, the only time that we really need to come out and do something. Is if like a network switch goes down or a piece of equipment goes down or firewall goes down. We're not, I mean, we're right here, we're local, um, there's, we have four guys that are local here in Eastland, so. Um, and if then one of them can't take care of it, and I'm forty-five minutes down the road, if I'm not here at the office, um, not.
What's been our problem in the police department, I've heard we've had a couple of run-ins in the police department and y'all trying to get things done, what's been some of those issues and we got those resolved?
Um, I don't know, I'll ask.
I think my issue is pretty open and I talk to Chance, this is one of my phone. Our issues are Nick letting down us over, working on our stuff over and over and over and not being accountable for. What's being billed to us and what's not being billed to us. Um, we spoke to him, I spoke to him this morning about doing a, across the board fee. That we would know what we're gonna pay at, at the end of every month, it's gonna be the same, what's fair for them and what's fair for us. But I need, there's some things and we're, we're supposed to talk in a week or so, but there's some issues we've had that I need fixed. My, I work twenty-four seven, I don't have a downtime. So when my guys are down at two o'clock in the morning, I need their stuff fixed at two o'clock in the morning, I don't need them to have a hard time. I damn sure don't need my captain told that he's not working up for somebody to get to a situation and take care of, I will not tolerate that. I will not use y'all if that's the situation. Um, if Chance can come to me, I would love to stay with them, if he can come to me with the solutions that I need to happen. To bring my department up to where it needs to be, then I'm happy with him.
Y'all are working on that now?
We're working on that, he's, he's working on that for us right now. But, I mean, there are just certain things that I need to start happening. That need to be happening and then, and the bottom line is, they're not the only provider out there. So if they can't provide the service for us, we need to look elsewhere. If they can, it's great, let's stay with them.
Yeah, I have some questions about the fees. If we're going to a monthly, uh, service fee of, at three thousand a month, is that right? Yes, ma'am. But then we also have all these hourly services. Is that, that does not include?
Well, so that's, that's typically, so what we were trying to do in this, in this, um, deal was, uh, all, unlimited on, uh, remote support. And then if we needed to come onsite, it would be a fee, but I, I think what we're trying to move towards is, I think what would work better for everybody is just an all, what we call like an all-in. Uh, price where it, it doesn't matter, like if you have a problem with your equipment, if you have a problem with, it doesn't matter if it's remote or if it's onsite. Or if it's, you know, two o'clock in the morning.
Well, there's these emergency and after hours support.
Yeah, I think.
Charges in here?
I think what I'd like to do is propose a different arrangement for the city and just do like an all-in price and not have, um. Onsite and, and urgent fees, but like, if you have an emergency, we'll just take care of it, so I think I could make it a. So I think I could make an amendment to this agreement.
And that is outside of regular business hours. Unlike the police department, we're pretty much 8 to 5, so.
So this is strictly for City Hall?
This is strictly City Hall.
Strictly for City Hall, yes, yes.
And the water plant.
And the skaters, yes.
Yeah.
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 That's a pretty important one.
It is.
So you're saying on takeout emergency and after-hours support, you would be removing this section?
Yeah, and the onsite, you know, I would remove that segment. So it'd be, it'd be what we would call like an all-in fee price? No.
So you had already waived the onboarding and implementation since we were already your existing IT client, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so we were just going with, then it would just be the flat?
It's.
3,000.
Well, right now, it's, so it's, we have the 10, we have the 10 users and then we have the two skater PCs and two.
38,000.
38,000.
Okay.
What's the 38,000?
Right, you're saying 38,000?
Yes.
Never seen that.
Yeah, right there.
Do you know what we've paid like over the last year in, in pay 12 months?
Yeah.
How is that going to compare to what we've been paying?
Go ahead, you can go ahead. It increases it.
It does increase it.
But we are not, we are no longer having to pay for our servers, which are $20,000 apiece. And we have two that need to be replaced now.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we're overdue, so it's 40, that's.
How much more is it?
Did we, approximately, did we say 20?
It was 19.
19, something. A year, a year, yes. And this, so currently, since we're on a hourly charge, we try not to call IT.
Okay.
I mean, Leslie and I will try to figure out, like if we can figure out the situation, so we're not calling IT. And that's our deal, and I think I'm right with what Tim is saying. We're in line of, we're not trying to call because it's a certain fee every hour, and if we can fix it, we try to fix it. But this allows us to, if we have an issue, call them and they're going to fix it because we're paying them for that.
Anything.
And I believe after talking with Mike, they expressed, if you have an issue, you need to call us because we're now, you know, at your will.
Correct.
At your beck and call.
Yes.
And they don't want, and they don't want us messing anything up either.
Yes.
We're a little different because we have to be CEGIS compliant.
You are, yes.
We've had some issues in the past that we've worked out where I'm not going to be locked out of my system.
Correct.
I'm in charge of that system, if you read the go-to procedure, it's mine. We've worked that out now where I do have access, so I'm not going to pay an IT service to add a printer on.
Right.
I've been doing that since college. But there are certain situations where I need that control with me and they've allowed me that now. But that's just one of those things we had to fight through when I first got here, because they didn't want to allow that. So there are certain things that we need them in place for, and CEGIS compliant comes up to a certain degree of that. But we also need that administrative ability to do what we need to do within our agency.
Right.
And we need to make sure that is planned for sure. I mean, I'm sorry, but I don't, I mean, and I'm not trying to, Chance does a great job, when you get Chance especially. But the problem is, I'm not going to pay somebody $90 an hour to add a printer on my computer when I can do that without worrying about any security issues.
Well, that's where I'm at with, you know, we try to do stuff in-house, so we're not.
You know.
Well.
There are certain times that I, if that printer's connected, that I need, there are some security issues there. But CEGIS is, I mean, I've been dealing with CEGIS for years and years and years. I understand how to stay CEGIS compliant, so we can do that and also have control over our own systems.
And that's just between y'all and.
Yes, that may not be an issue for y'all in the city side.
No, it's not an issue for us at all, City Hall.
So part of the, part of the reason why the rates are going up is, is not only can we do like a unlimited service, but it's mainly because a lot of the services that we're bringing into the environment is so much more. So we're bringing in a lot of licensing, like what Tim was talking about. We bring in, we're bringing in technology that's called privileged access management, where, you know, like if Lizzie needs to install a printer, she has permission to do that. It automatically allows her computer to install the printer if she needs to do that, but it does it securely. So there's, there's just a, you know, like if, let's say if we were going to grade their security right now, I can't remember, I'd have to look at their risk assessment, but it's pretty poor because they need a lot more security. City Hall needs security, City Eastland needs security, everybody needs security. It's only going to get worse with AI. Like AI coming out is, is going to, is, I mean, it's a benefit for everybody and it's also a threat for the, for businesses because all these attackers are going to start using AI to try to infiltrate your business, either through your firewall or through your computers or through your Microsoft. And it's important that we bring in security tools and put in policies and procedures in place that help protect a lot of those things. And then if something actually gets through, you know, like a lot of our tools will cover maybe, let's say like hot, you know, 98, 99% of the system, nothing's going to be 100%. And if something actually does get through there, in order for your cyber insurance policy to pay out, if you get ransomware or you get a breach, you have to have a security like this now, because otherwise they'll deny your claim.
Yeah, it will.
So it's just, the whole industry is shifting to, from break-fix, what we used to do to manage services, like we're trying to bring in with a full suite of cybersecurity. So any service issues, I'm here to make sure that we improve those service issues. Tim can call me directly, the captain can call me directly, Savannah can call me directly. Whatever we need to do to fix any issues, I'm here to address those. And whatever we need to do to get the servers replaced and the security up to par, whatever I need to do.
Do you have a question?
We'll see the final, I mean, City Hall is going to change this up, so we'll see the final.
Are you going to amend it or whatever?
Yeah, I can do that right now if you want me to.
Do you want to vote on an amended one? Or do you want him to fix it and give it to you right now, or do you want?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, once you make these changes, are we going to see it and we're going to vote on the one that's amended? Like if we approve this now, it's with consideration that you're going to make those changes that you said you should make.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I can do that, I can do that right now.
I, I love a man who waits till we read what that manual says and we know what's in that manual. And then we get the rate fees structure like we're, like he's saying, to change the wording. Maybe just table it till next month.
Can you do that right now, did you just say?
Yeah, I think so. I can do the contract, I'm trying to find some of this where I can edit it out and either print it or send it via e-signature.
But you're, what are you, you're talking about the IT policy.
Yeah. Till.
Yeah, there's, we've had our attorney read that already. And all we're doing now is looking for anything that we question that Chance said that we'll discuss or change.
If we approve it and we question it, we're, it's done.
So you want to see the IT policy?
That's right, you're right.
I agree.
I, I, we get through this IT policy, but they study it and read it, understand it, even though the attorney said yay. You know, I've questioned attorneys before in my life too, but what fits?
See the, see the changes that are actually made in there, yeah.
She approved it as far as the ladies' standpoint.
Leslie and I are looking at it for if it will fit our.
If there's any.
The city.
And that's, that's what I'm saying, if we approve it, you're stuck with it, doesn't matter whether you like it or not.
If it's too restrictive, then we need to make the change.
Okay, one of our problems is trying to get this done so we can move forward to the computer. And I'm not trying to rush into it. But we can approve, all we're approving right now is a master service agreement, right? That's what we're approving, is a master service agreement.
Yes.
And inside that, and that was the very thing that I started this conversation with, was after you get it, after you sign this agreement, we can approve this managed service agreement. And with the understanding that we will also get the corrected, our client, this handbook and this IT policy, and those are sent to our standards, our approval of this is null and void until they have done that. And once we sign off that that's good, because I asked that question, who has read this client service handbook and who's read the IT policy? Y'all pointed at Tony. The only guy that's not here, y'all, who can blame it on? Is he watching this on Facebook or anything?
He probably is.
So he ran under the bus. Somebody said that a while ago, Tony's ready. Yeah, somebody said Tony's ready a while ago. Because I thought that was funny, poor Tony. I hear the defending. But can we do that that way? And, and, because I'm not going to have a clue that we're, I'm sorry, I read this junk with AT&amp;T, but, but the city people, the City Hall has to be comfortable with these, this client handbook and the IT policy. And once they approve both of those and you've got those and everybody's approved, then this is paid, this is done, and we can start paying you. You get no money or nothing until that is done.
Okay.
Are we clear?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And that was what I had discussed with Mike before, for me, was if we could hold off on the client handbook and the IT policy manual. And he was, I mean, he said, okay, but you're the.
Do you need to pull that wording out of the?
Yeah, and we're going to have to change this, but.
Well, y'all can do that tomorrow or something. We can't, y'all, because y'all need to see that in writing and see it done. We need to go back and forth. I'm just saying, until the city manager approves this client handbook and the IT policy, this manager service agreement is not going to draw a dime until that's all done. And once we've done all that, because this says on here, once you sign this agreement, we don't get that until we, I mean, that's just, that's an insane way that's written, I'm sorry.
It is, that's not written right.
Anyway, are we good with that?
You're right.
Yes, sir.
You understand?
Yes, I understand.
Commissioner, are y'all good? And you can make your motion, that way whoever makes the motion. And we can move on, once you guys say it's good, then we're good. If something falls apart in two months and we go, they approved it, it's on them now.
Okay.
So let me respect something. Okay, so this, actually, this item here is to approve the agreement, but the agreement is not what we're making a motion on. It's, it's the policy that we don't have, right?
No, you are approving the master service agreement.
Master service agreement, right here. Master service agreement.
The policy that y'all are talking about, the attorney's reading?
These are down here, these are the client handbook. Well, see, this is, this is what's crazy about this wording. That's what I'm, this wording is crazy. You don't get these until we assign the master service agreement. And this master.
I'm looking at the actual agenda item to approve the, okay, approve the master.
Master service agreement from the city and Kennedy Financial, or Kennedy Computer, Kennedy Computer Solutions. That's a master, that's this agreement right here. And that's what this, we've got this and that gets into money, and here's the master plan, and they're going to cover all these. But I want to know that we've approved these two things before this is actually enforced and we pay you any money. And that's sitting in your lap. You good?
Yes and no. I mean, I see, I see what you're saying, I'm just saying that we're approving this service agreement, but that's what we want changed.
The only thing we're changing on this, I think, was Chance said he was going to take out this emergency and after-hours support. He was going to remove this part in this.
So we'll approve it with that condition.
Plus, yeah, plus, if we get this client handbook or this IT policy and there's an issue with that, he has to fix it and make him happy, or this doesn't go into effect.
Correct. Correct.
So it's contingent on the approval.
Of the client handbook and the IT.
Emergency and after-hours items. And the approval by City Hall of the client handbook and IT policy.
Yes, that's what I have heard now.
How do you make this?
So I'll make that motion, Nick.
Okay, I need a motion. Now, there's going to be a change, okay, I'll give you the motion that you're about to do. I'll put it out there and y'all can say, I agree, and let's go. We are going to approve the master service agreement with the amendments that are suggested, have been suggested in the back of that with the billing of this. And this agreement does not go into effect until the city manager signs off on and agrees to the client services handbook and the IT policy manual. If she does not approve both of those, then our approval of this policy is null, of the master service agreement is null and void, and no money will exchange hands.
That's what I was trying to say.
Hey, girl, Shirley! I'll second that, I'll second that.
James is second in that motion.
Yeah, James, yeah.
All his papers say a. Oh, she's curious.
Good job, Mayor.
Yeah, I like that. Shirley, you're right.
Are you briefing?
Yes, sir.
City manager briefing.
Okay, so the street improvement project, I do not have pictures for you today, and I apologize. I will give you extra pictures next month. There have been several storm drains that have been replaced and installed on Moss Street. I listed those out, the intersection of Dodderay Moss, Walnut Moss, Greenin Moss, Lamar Moss. And once we uncover some of these roads, the storm drains are in poor condition, so we are, we had some extra funding through the GLO projects, and we are utilizing that to fix and install new storm drains. Demo has started on East White Street over by Burt's Shores and the Family Dollar. And phase two of the creek resurfacing, that starts next Monday, February 24th. It's supposed to last 90 days, it'll probably be done before then, but that's the expected timeline. We're still working on the buyout portion, we're working alongside GLO, so it's still an ongoing process. Texas Water Development Board.
We don't have the buyout part of this thing done yet?
No.
They extended it.
GLO, we're requesting an extension and we're arguing back and forth with GLO, but they're the ones that have held us up this entire time.
Because of the Water Development Board, that's in their hands now.
It is in their hands now.
Are we, do we know if there's any movement on that at all?
It was submitted last week, it was signed and submitted last week to Texas Water Development Board, and I have not received an update today.
Is there any way we can find out from our legislators? Find if anybody we can call and.
Well, they've only had it a week.
Only a week?
Yes, they've only had it in their hands a week. We've been waiting on contractors to get bonds.
You may have got Elon Musk's phone number, if you can get this fixed. Well, if there's something we can do.
Yes, sir.
Me as the mayor, making a phone call, getting our senator, getting our representative, somebody, and I don't want to make them mad, but I think five years is long enough.
I agree. I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, they've cost us over a million dollars already.
Something to get off the pot.
Anyway, we can do that. If you have any idea, you talk to the engineer for something we can do, and they know some trick, then let's get that done.
I'll look for an update tomorrow from the engineer. I have a meeting with them, so I'll look and ask.
Will they come here or you want a phone call?
Phone call.
What time is the phone call?
Nine.
Okay.
General election. Roma, did you want to give an update on this?
We're not having an election.
We're not having an election.
Yay. We have our two.
Yeah, I tell their commissioner, say my thing.
Getting a good dose of it tonight. Yeah.
Wildfire mitigation, oh, March will have the resolution to cancel the election at the March meeting. And wildfire mitigation, this is ongoing, currently working on an RFP for specific pieces of equipment. I'm working alongside with Bobby on what equipment will assist us in clearing our rideaway for wildfire mitigation. Hopefully, next month, by, I have an update in March with Cisco Ranger and Eastland Carbon. Hopefully, we have some kind of formal resolution of what each city is doing. And I can bring that for an agreement for the council to approve. Eastland Youth Sports Authority Board, they're actively working to ensure the fields, as Bucky Williams said, playable, sitable, and watchable for the upcoming season. They're working diligently and they're making some progress. The Kenneth Chapman Pavilion at the park, the top has been removed on the existing pavilion. The poles will be removed, they're still there pending weather. And they're estimated to have the new pavilion up by April. It could be May, May was their original date, but they've pushed it to, or they've moved it up to April. Roma included a picture of the Papon Grove Earn Garden. Sterling Monument installed the marker.
They donated that marker.
They donated.
They donated the marker. We paid for the base, but they donated the marker.
Yes. Are there any questions on any of the report or anything that you didn't see in the report? Oh, the, I did not put this in my report, I apologize. Oh, the, I did not put this in my report, I apologize. The sign, the red, the lights at the fire department. Jordan Perry gave an update last week or week before when I called him. They've changed their sign, it now will be a sign that flashes when the fire vehicle will leave the station or enter the station. They said six weeks.
Sign?
Yes.
It's sort of a lot.
Well, it's a light, or it's a sign with a light.
What was the sign saying?
I don't know, I didn't ask.
Typically, they say emergency aid was entering or something to that nature.
It's like a yield sign?
Fireman's gotta be careful.
It's hard, you know.
You're right for that, yo.
I don't know.
Six weeks.
Six weeks for an order and install, and this has been said more than one time, and so no promises. Because we keep getting pushed and pushed and pushed.
Yeah.
January, January 2021 project.
Still, you're ahead of, you hadn't caught up to the Water Development Board. As anybody, I've heard more than one complaint, and I'll throw my complaint in there about the new lights and what it takes to get through those lights. I've set at the line on this side, but nowhere the car is coming. And it's not changing, I mean, it's like, they're not telling a little deliberate because somebody here changed the light. And we, y'all, and the city all heard any complaints about that?
Chief Pitts received several complaints over the weekend regarding that light, I don't know if he would like to.
He's talking, hey, Pitts, can we have your attention, please? We're trying to run a meeting.
Yes, sir.
Have you heard complaints or have you done anything about the new light? Have you made any phone calls about the light, what it takes to get through the light?
I've had plenty of complaints about the new light.
Have we made any phone calls to Texas?
I've made a lot of calls and then I got a contact today from Savannah that I'm going to make a phone call tomorrow.
To Jordan Perry?
Yes.
Okay.
See if I can get something pushed on it.
Well, let me know how that comes out, because we need that, it's really something wrong, right? There's, I'm seeing several, I see stuff on Facebook now, I've heard complaints about it, I complained myself. The other day, we left early in the morning, we got stopped on this side, there's not a car inside.
Oh, I know, and I, the third complaint I took today or this weekend, I told them, I said, I'm not charged with the lights, I'll do what I can, but I understand, I live out there too, I have to stop at that light also. So I bet I will.
And they could be better, I'm not saying we won't be stopped, but I'm telling you, nobody else is coming.
I'll contact you next time tomorrow.
Let me know how that goes. Code compliance, so we don't have to worry about that?
I do have an update, sorry. At the bottom, cost of cases abated $10,524, that increased from, this is on the existing one that was tore down. That increased, there was one extra roll-off bill that came in that was not reported. A, one dangerous building citation was issued for a building on North Oak. The, we did place a lien for the structure that was abated and it includes the time, postage, filing fees. And that's been filed. 408 East Olive Street is a house that Terry is currently working. There, he was looking for errors of that property and so the one listed said that there is other errors to it, so we possibly could have to do a title search. We've requested information from them, waiting for them to respond. So we can take the next step, if they don't, we'll see what our options are. Do you have any questions on the report itself?
Is there anything that property, like you're headed out headed to Cisco on the right that looks like one huge.
Anticor or something, yes.
Lot sale, what's going on there?
Terry and I believe Tony have both contacted those owners. They were moving the outside sale. And that's the last update I had, they were giving them time to move it, I will see what the new update is.
It just seems to be growing every time.
I think our problem, I remember part of the discussion is that's commercial property.
It is, but.
Oh, is that, is that the place where my aunt heard more complaints on that?
Something about the outside, the variance and. While it looks like they moved.
They moved it back, but this past weekend.
They just, they just blown going.
This past weekend, I was drunk, I was like, whoa, my gosh.
That's just my wife, and several others, I've been women that just complain, like about it, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
There needs to be some way, family way to get around that.
Technically Commerce Street, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it is Commerce, West Commerce.
We'll get it looked back into.
What was the north, okay, if you mentioned one of them?
It is the old church, old church.
Old church?
The old church on North Oak, the old Liberty Baptist.
408 East Olive, they're, they're a street from all.
What else, it's all from code compliance?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, who is this? Chief Police, it's Pitts.
That's Badger's over there.
On the police department side of things, we answered 374 calls for service in January, made 18 arrests, 44 offense reports were generated, we had 49 agency assists.
Yeah, I know.
We had 924 business checks, seven traffic crashes were worked, eight domestic disturbances were worked. We filed 11 cases with the district attorney's office and one case with juvenile probation. And we had 11 open records requests filled. On the traffic side of things, the guys wrote 171 citations, 500 warnings for 671 traffic contacts. On the animal control side of things, we answered 101 calls for service, two citations were issued, zero warnings, 21 animals were impounded, 14 were adopted and we had one quarantined. We had four narcotics arrests, 11 felony warrant arrests, one vehicle pursuit. And Lieutenant McDade also went to a interview school put on by the Texas Rangers in the Metroplex, which got him a lot, a lot of skill on doing some pretty, pretty extensive interviews.
Do we have an animal control officer?
We have one hired, we, we've got a lady hired now full time, we moved our kennel tech over to a part time, so we actually have a full time and part time. And she should be up and going, she's working with Blake right now, getting, learning the ropes, but it's.
I see the truck out moving around, I think he's driving.
Yeah, she's out with it and.
What is her name?
Her name is.
Carrie Pollan.
Yes.
Carrie Pollan, the I L A N T.
Yes.
Pollan.
And can I go back to the top total calls for service, what exactly was that number?
347.
347. You had all the right, you had all the right numbers.
Well, that's all the man.
No one back there waving their hands, did you hear that, did you hear that? Any other questions? Anything else for Chief Pitts?
No.
Chief Williams.
Good evening, thank you, 2025, we came in, busy ourselves, we ended up with 114 calls for service in January, keeping up with our pace of three, over three calls a day out of the house. Eighty-nine of those incidents occurred within the city limits, 20 were outside of the city limits and five of those incidents, we responded to our neighbors. We installed, we did get to install a smoke detector and we made 16 calls after 10 o'clock and before 7:00 in the morning. We attended eight structure fires last month, which is typical for January, but that actually is quite a bit. But five of them, you can see attributed to the mutual aid. We had one in the city and then that would put one in the county, so the five were assisting Cisco Ranger, Carbon and Olden is where we went, and then we had one ourselves. Zero grass fires, we had four vehicle fires. And one of those was a motor home and then, and then vehicle fires, I believe all of those vehicle fires were on the interstate. 68 medical assists where we assisted the medic crews on a first responder program, six motor vehicle accidents and 16 public assists, two false alarms and six calls for some type of an investigation. We did have one rescue where we used a Jaws Life with three hazardous material calls. With that Jaws Life, our Jaws Life failed us again. We've had a significant issue with our extrication tools and we have essentially put them in the trash. The volunteers have purchased a full set of the extrication tools and it, those, using the funding, partial of the funding that we raised from the 25 Days of Christmas fundraiser. So we've allocated some of that, that funding to, to fill that gap. So this has just been an ongoing issue, we've worked hand in hand with the vendor. They cannot solve the problem and, and we can't afford to take the, to continue to do a trial and error and, and we come out on the wrong end, so. So we're looking forward to, I was on the phone today with the vendor, we ought to be receiving our tools fairly quickly, so.
They knew it would be battery powered?
Yeah, these are battery powered, I, I'm kind of old school, I had a hard time going to that, but really the, because there was a lot of issue with the battery powered tools in the beginning, but the technology has gotten up, it's there now. So yes, these are battery powered, kind of a, kind of a thing that handcuffs us with our, with our light rescue truck. Our, we have a nice set, they're very old, but they're a nice set of tools, but they're, they're umbilically corded to the truck on a hose reel. So these battery powered tools, we're able to go off, if a, if a vehicle leaves the roadway, we're able to make, carry those tools to that scene and not be stuck on a roadway. So we're, we're really looking forward to improve our service tremendously, that's, that's the volunteers chose to use that fundraiser. That, that money comes from the community and participating in that, that, that 25 Days of Christmas in December where we are able to do that. We took on, we didn't get any volunteers in, in the month of January. And so that's, that's our statistics for the month of January. Yeah, and so I will have, I will bring this to you like a, I was proud as a new daddy. We started our fire academy last week and we're just excited about it, we have 16 students. Currently tuition has brought in 18,500 and we set up a payment plan for some of the students just so they'd have an opportunity to pay out that tuition. And once all those payment plans are recovered, we'll have a $24,000 revenue for that, for that fire academy.
Does that go to y'all or does that go to state or?
So the, the Eastland Fire Training Center is what we named it, is set up through the city of Eastland. So all the tuition comes into the city and, and then, and so, and so we use that revenue for expenses to the academy. But we did set up the revenue through the city budget. So, yeah, so I want to pardon my near tardiness. Because of the holiday, this is our meeting night, and so I was juggling both of those things and so we're, we're, the meeting, training, the training tonight was cold weather preparedness.
We didn't even, we didn't even know you were light, you were light actually.
But near tardiness.
Much more efficient.
Near tardiness, but so we have, we've used some of the revenues so far from the fire academy as we're remodeling, developing the training, our training room, the Greg Simmons Training Room. And I would love to invite you all individually, it's sometimes stop by unannounced and kind of look at the progress and the update that we've made to our training facility. It gives us a great instructor to student delivery method and then also, you know, our hands-on stuff. We're, we've got a lot of positive, we're going to have a very good academy, we're going to have a very good training program.
Kind of update us a little bit on, I know you can train on a lot of stuff, you're, you're certified to train a lot. Don't you have some of your other people trained in the certification where they can train as well?
Yes, sir, that was the, when we got, when the, when the fire department, the city of Eastland got certified through the Texas Commission on Fire Protection to be a training center, then we put our members through to get them certified as fire instructors through TCP, TCFP, which allows them to be instructors to this academy and other classes.
How many do you have right now, you know that I'll tell you?
There's four of us total.
Besides you or including?
No, including, including myself, there's four. So what will happen is once we get some of our volunteers through this training and certified, then we'll be able to send them through the fire instructor and kind of build up our, 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 our list of instructors. And it just kind of grows exponentially once we start building up, so. And then through the, I think the last meeting or the meeting before, the city supported our VCP program, the Volunteer Compensation Program. And so with that, the volunteers have put in some time and, and we're remodeling the living quarters as to accommodate the extra staff that we're having. So what we're doing is we're managing the time funding, so when we have a vacancy, then we can make that vacancy up with two VCPs. So there are times we're having three people on shift at a time, as an example being today. So we have three, we have three members at the station 24 hour, on a 24 hour shift right now. So we're, we're just excited about a lot of the progress.
You have a minimum of three.
Yeah, minimum, yeah, that, those are, those that are, those three are in-house, under roof with gear on the engine, ready to respond at the drop of a tone. Also supplemented by the, by 24 member roster.
You still have those firemen down there, people that are just mingling.
Yes.
Being part of the team.
And so also this next month, you'll see in the statistics, our volunteer membership will increase because our students are wanting to join the department and participate in the VCP and become credentialed. And so it's, we're going to be growing our participation. One thing leads to the benefit of another, so, very excited, thank y'all for the support.
You forgot to mention, see the last thing down there?
Oh, what I did, next weekend is our chili cook-off, fourth annual chili cook-off. I think we have 11 entries right now, we're hoping a few more, so it's going to be a good time. Big trophies, we had first, second and third place, like we always had, this year we added people's choice. So there'll be a fourth trophy for, for that, so we invite you all over to attend that.
What are the hours?
It, well, the judging starts at 4:30 and then, and then the serving is to 6:00. After the judging and you, everybody shares their chili and we go around and that's when we'll announce it to people shortly after. And then one last thing, although we want to say, public service announcement as loud as we can, that with the cold weather, we understand the challenges of caring for the pets and watch out. But the heat lamps are a significant fire hazard. And we just ask the public and the community to be, be aware, look for an alternative method for trying to care for your pets, protect them from the wind, bedding, different things. The heat lamps, those are some of the contributors to the structure fires that we attended. And with this frigid weather, we, we know it's tempting to, to, to keep them warm, but, but we, those are significant hazards. So we just want to put that announcement out there, thank you for your time.
Oh, you're not through.
Thank you.
I need to, I think we need to update the other commissioners on some of the damage we've had to the fire station. And I didn't know if you wanted to mention that, I asked Savannah, we should, or go ahead. I think we need to make the commissioner aware, we've got a little expense item that's going to have to be addressed.
Yeah, so we started our remodel and, and into accommodating the bedrooms for the VCP, the additional staffing. When we got into the sheet rock and some of the thing into the HVAC system, we have discovered that our return air system that is climate controlling the living quarters has been drawing contaminated air from the truck bay. And so we have a significant contaminated HVAC system through the ductwork and through the plumes. We found a lot of, there's going to need to be a lot of, well, a complete new system is going to have to be put in. I believe the system was put in when the system building was fabricated, when it was added on and, and it created some issues that once we tore into, in behind things, we realized that we had a significant contamination issue. And it's going to take a pretty significant remodel to repair that. We had, we've had, we had, we've had one HVAC company out, we have not heard from them yet. The second one came out today for the bid process.
Yeah, I just don't have to.
Oh.
Thirty-one thousand.
Yeah.
First one, thirty-one? The first bid, we got thirty-one thousand, that's kind of the, that doesn't count, sheet rock work and thing. and thing to put it back together, having to get the HVAC.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, the city manager came down, it was, we have some pictures. It was, it's, it's, uh. Demarcations of the smoke stains on the carpet and in the.
Insulation.
Yeah, oh, the insulation, yeah, just, but in the carpet, the registers are saturated.
Air filters.
So, yeah, yeah, the air filters, we replaced, we're replacing the air filters, and they, they just turned black within like six days, you know, and so we were trying to change them, and it just, from the expense purpose, we just went through a 30-day.
It was a lot of sheetrock, white insulation.
That's why.
Yeah, that's why.
And that's kind of.
So we, we've implemented some SOPs, some different processes, some procedures for trying to reduce as much of that contamination as we can, but it is a machinery, the, the equipment failure that's causing that.
It's a mess, but it'll get handled. What else, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What's the weather supposed to be like Saturday? I know Sunday's gonna be pretty.
Yeah, Saturday is the first time we, according to the forecast, we're getting from the National Weather Service, will be the first time we come out of the freezing, above 32, Saturday.
Sunday's gonna be 70 degrees.
But I believe we're supposed to be under 32 from now until Saturday, yeah.
Still chilly weather.
But yeah, yeah, it'll be like 40 or something, but it, it will feel rather warm after what we're fixing up in the next couple of days.
You also have a copy of the Chamber of Commerce and the Houston Community Foundation, their numbers for the, okay, multiple tax dollars, what they're supposed to give us quarterly, and a copy of those, plus the one lyric providing. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate for me to make a request of the city for an agenda item that I would like to have out for next month, that you give a little bit of lead time with someone at the city to dig into it?
We'll do that with the Holler S or whatever, we'll, we'll get you on there.
Well, I was, I was wondering if I could say what that is now to get some movement of research.
No. You can tell us when the time comes. Give us a, give us the document, give us the information, and we will cover that, okay?
I might have to move to the German.
I'll second it.
Move to the German. You second Richard?
Yes, I did.
Second Richard. All the papers say a. Close same time. Motion carried.